Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Seeing all three commissioners present, we will call to order the July 16th meeting of Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. I'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and ask Judy Trumbetta to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to your public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we've got a number of announcements today. You know, excited to share a few different things. The first is concerning the county minimum wage. So after years of record inflation, the cost of everything from rent to gas to a gallon of milk have gone up. All of you know this. I think 25% of the cost of groceries have gone up in the last five years, approximately that amount. But wages haven't kept pace and there are people working very hard, including for the county, doing things that they love to make a difference in public service, who are struggling to make ends meet. And in Monco, we want to be able to help and make a difference in that. So there's a conversation happening at the state level right now on the minimum wage and whether or not it will be raised. We want to be a part of that conversation and show what we're able to do in Montgomery County for our own employees that can set an example. So today Montgomery County is proposing to raise the minimum wage for Montgomery County employees for from $16 an hour to $20.52 an hour, which would make it the highest minimum wage of any county government in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Because everyone working on behalf of the county's 868,000 residents deserves to be paid wage that provides stability, safety, and is closer to our goal of a living wage. And we've seen the lack of action by lawmakers both in Washington and Harrisburg on this front, but it's important for us to recognize that at the county level, we can set an example and we're doing that. So given that I'm a numbers person, I'd outline a few different things. So today, this is where we're at. So we're at 1651 and we're moving up to 2052. And what that means is immediately 170 so employees will get a raise if we vote on this today. And that's people working in every aspect of the government. If you look, it's the courts, the DA's office, defender's office, it's the sheriff's office, it's public health, it's children and youth, many support staff, people working in facilities, people working in parks and A&amp;I, it's across the board. And how that compares is significant and it shows that we're leading. So if you look across all of the collar counties and our neighbors, this will put Monco at the top of the list, which is something that we're proud of. And many people may have the question, and many people, many people may have the question, how are you going to pay for this, right? Many of you know that we launched an initiative, the Office of Innovation Strategy and Performance. We're very proud that they have already found $2.5 million in savings across the county and we're able to make the decision to deliver some of that savings directly for our employees by raising the minimum wage. So that's the way that we're doing this. Thank you to Stephanie and Eli for leading in that effort. So I don't want to shame my collar county colleagues, so I'm definitely going to get a message about that one, but I think it's important that we show that we can take action at the local level because if you look at our context at the state level, the difference is even worse, right? So Pennsylvania has a minimum wage of 725, that is the federal minimum wage. If you look at Ohio, it's $10.70. New Jersey, our neighbor, $15.49. West Virginia, our neighbor, is $8.75. That's more than, you know, Pennsylvania. And I can tell you it's more expensive to live in Monco than most places in West Virginia. New York is at 1550, the city is at 1650, and the surrounding counties like West Chester, 1650, and Delaware is at $15. So it's really important to see that Pennsylvania is way behind. Our minimum wage has not kept pace with inflation, certainly not kept pace with productivity. And we want our legislature to be able to take action and raise the wage across the state like all of our neighbors. So we're hoping that by, you know, showing that we can take the steps as a county, as an organization, that the state can do the same across the board. So I will turn it over to my colleague, Commissioner Winder, for comments on this.
Thank you for allowing me to be your Vanna White. Did I do a good job assisting him? Good. Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Commissioner Mckeesha. Today, we're not just voting on a wage increase, we're showing what real leadership looks like. While Harrisburg continues their budget negotiations, and I know we have many colleagues that are fighting the foot, good fight to ensure that they get that budget over the finish line, Montgomery County is taking action. We're moving forward, we're settling, we're setting the standard for the Commonwealth. The proposal to raise the minimum wage for county employees to $20.52 an hour is about valuing our people. The parents, the caregivers, and the essential workers who keep the county running deserve a wage that reflects that commitment. Behind every policy are our people. Behind every paycheck are families and every day, friends and neighbors trying to make a living. This vote says to our employees, we see your work and we believe that you deserve better. We are also sending a clear message to business leaders. Good business means investing in your people. It's not just the right thing to do, it's the smart thing to do. Fair wages lead to better retention, stronger morale, and better services for our public. This is how we make county government not just functional, but exceptional. We're not waiting for someone else to raise the bar. We're doing it here, now, and we invite others to follow. We can't set wage policy for every employer in the Commonwealth, but we can lead locally. We can model what treating workers with respect and fairness looks like. And this is personal for me. I grew up in a household where both of my parents were public servants. My mother was an educator, my father was the deputy warden at Gredeford. They raised my brother and I here in Montgomery County on public salaries. They worked hard, believed in what they did, and gave their all to this great community. I want today's public servants to feel the same sense of purpose without having to sacrifice financial stability. People don't choose public service to get rich, but they shouldn't have to choose between helping others and meeting, making ends meet. Every job should be a good job. Every worker deserves a wage that lets them live with security. When people think of government, they may picture office buildings, but government is people. People who maintain our parks, answer 911 calls, inspect bridges, issue marriage licenses, and protect our public health. If we want strong communities, we have to start with strong teams. That means paying people fairly, supporting their growth, and creating a workplace where people want to stay and serve. This vote is about investing in our people who invest in us. That's what leadership looks like in Montgomery County, and that's how we lead local and push the Commonwealth forward. So thank you.
Thank you. So I'll just say a couple of things that I've missed is that our county has a workforce of about 3,000 people. The average salary is about 72,000. And we've made a number of steps in the last year, including paid leave, that have set a new standard for the state, including on benefits such as IVF and dependent and childcare. So, you know, this is part of a broader initiative that we're trying to do to make the county a great place to work and give our employees everything that they deserve. The next step of this, because we don't have the authority to just enact this by fiat over the county jurisdiction, right? Pennsylvania has to pass a state law in order to raise wages, in order to create a paid leave program, which other states do, right? New York, our neighbors, New Jersey, Michigan, many states in similar circumstances as well. And, you know, what our hope is, is that others will pay attention, follow suit, and that we can collaborate with private businesses and showcase those businesses as well within Montgomery County when they take these kinds of actions. So with that, yeah, I'll just thank again our staff on the Innovation Strategy and Performance for finding us the savings, allowing us to make this decision. And we'll have more comments in the upcoming budget season as to how we go forward. Any other comments? Thank you. All right, so I will make a few other comments. Yesterday, I attended a National Energy and Innovation Summit hosted by Senator David McCormick at Carnegie Mellon in Pittsburgh. It was a gathering of leaders in government, academia, and industry, and really fascinating conversations about AI and the energy infrastructure that we need to power AI. And there was an announcement, billions of dollars of investment in Pennsylvania, including $2 billion or so in Limerick Power Plant here in Montgomery County, which is undergoing a number of upgrades, which will allow it to more efficiently deliver electricity. And, you know, I think one of the things that I noted from this is there was a lot of energy in the western part of the state and not a whole lot of people from the southeastern part of the state. But we have many great things happening in technology, in clean energy here in Montgomery County that would be important to showcase in that kind of setting and support. And, you know, I'm excited, we've had about 100 people apply to our AI Advisory Council, which we launched in the spring. We're going to be going through those applications and creating that in the next couple of months in early fall. We have a staff member who's going to be in point for that. But beyond just the energy infrastructure piece of AI, something that is more kind of within our control as a county to deploy is how do we actually use AI and how do we make sure it serves the public good? So one of the conversations I was able to have, there's me with the robot dog, which was a lot of fun to drive, that was designed at a, in that Carnegie Mellon initiative, and it's actually used for search and rescue. And they're developing a mechanism so that the robot can go into disaster areas or rubble and help people who may have, who, you know, literally may be lost in those circumstances. And the principal investigator of that project wants to come to Montgomery County to work with our search and rescue teams and training facilities. So that was one of the clear takeaways that I had from this, which I think is, you know, exciting. We already are doing innovative things, our sheriff's team has a bomb squad, a robot that looks similar to that, but there are going to be many different applications and tools that serve the public and public safety at large. So excited to follow up on many of those things. So next, we're excited to announce a new grant that will strengthen our efforts to reduce homelessness in Montgomery County. And I've got some great friends in the room, in the Opsol family, inside Opsol, Mateen, who are here to accept commendation, which I want to present because, you know, many people might think, why support, you know, why support government, right? Why would a private foundation support the work of government? But I think what Kaylee, who's been leading our Housing and Community Development Office for many years, has shown is that people want to support your work and our work as a county because you're doing an extraordinary job at helping people get off the streets and into homes and into stable jobs where they can, you know, live, you know, a life that they aspire to. So, you know, I'm really thankful that we received a significant grant from, from the Opsol family, and you have been, you know, inspirations for our whole county. When I think of the American dream and the story to come from around the world and to build a company that employs, you know, people here in Montgomery County in an innovative sector that is changing the game when it comes to the use of energy and deployment, it's really amazing to share your story here in Montgomery County and to be a part of that and to then see you giving back in a way that is exceptional. So with the support from the foundation, we're going to be able to use funds to support Your Way Home, which is our signature initiative that has helped 10,000 people get off the streets and into safe places, safe places to live. And we can use those funds more flexibly when they come from a foundation. So whether it's, you know, covering the cost of application fees, back pay and outstanding rent, repairs, housing itself, this funding will give us the resources to serve an additional 40 households in Montgomery County in the coming year. And that's, you know, 40 people, 40 families who are going to be able to find safety and security who would not have been able to have that otherwise. So I would like to present a letter of commendation to the Opsol family, if you don't mind coming up here. And just on behalf of the board, we're all grateful for your support of Your Way Home. Thank you.
(Applause) (Music)
(Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) Okay, so my final comment is back on Sunday, I'll be riding in the 38th. Is that right, 38th? Okay.
Are you driving or riding?
Riding.
Okay.
Riding. I'll be riding, I'm not, yeah, riding a bike, not a motorcycle, but I'll be riding in the 38th Annual the Bend to the Shore Bike Ride, which will raise money for children's charities and families and fallen first responders through the Families Behind the Badge Children's Foundation. And very excited to hear this. You know, my predecessor, Commissioner Lawrence, was someone who rode in this ride, unfortunately, he's, he's recovering from a surgery. Sorry to reveal your level of protected information, Commissioner Lawrence. He's doing, you know, he's doing better. We're going to go back on the ride soon. But I'm excited to join the DA's office under Kevin Steele, and he's participated in this ride and I think with the team in the detective's office with Mark, also founded by now Judge Furman. They've done this for about 17 years, and a team of riders called the Wheels of Justice. And I'll be joining the Wheels of Justice with the DA's Office for First Responders, law enforcement from around Montgomery County. And it's amazing because Wheels of Justice is the top team in this ride. It's a 65-mile ride. I think about 200 people are riding, and I've already raised about $140,000. So, they're on their way to matching that again for the families of fallen officers. And, yeah, I'm looking forward to, to getting out on the road, and hopefully I, I make it and they don't have to sweep me up. But I did a training ride this weekend, so I just feel like I'm all right. I did, I did two training rides. So, yes, this, yeah, this caused for concern, but, yeah, I feel okay. All right, turn it over to Mr. Winder.
Thanks. Well, I'm going to offer you my prayers for that, that, that ride, but I'm sure you'll, you'll do great. So, good morning again. So, I just want to take a moment to highlight an exceptional employee who I've had the honor of getting to know over the last two and a half years. I wanted everyone to join me in congratulating our Administrator of the Montgomery County Office of Housing and Community Development, Kaylee Silver, for her recent appointment to the Pennsylvania Enter Agency Council on Homelessness. So, can we just give her? Kaylee was appointed to this new council by Governor Shapiro, where she will help guide the creation of the Commonwealth's first ever Housing Action Plan. Given her experience in leading Montgomery County's initiatives to ensure our residents have access to safe, affordable housing and stable housing, I have no doubt that she will be a valuable asset to the council and will be a strong advocate for communities all across the state. And I just want to personally thank you for your leadership and partnership with me over the, the last year. We've done some amazing things as an administration around tackling homelessness, and we couldn't do this work without you. So, congratulations to you. I'm going to give my colleagues an opportunity to give a congratulations, and then we'll call you up for a picture.
Look, I, I just said it. I mean, you're doing amazing work every day, and Monco is really a model and has been for how we address homelessness and housing. And, you know, I know you spoke at the C cap conference this weekend, and I had people calling me saying Kaylee Silver knows her stuff. And, and that's a national forum where people are looking for leadership on how counties can address housing, and you're providing that. So, thank you.
I just want to say, I mean, we've been working with you for like a year and a half now, and we've made a lot of investments in, you know, some of the homelessness issues and all that that we're working on throughout the county, and it's been a pleasure working with you. I know you're dedicated to your role. You're dedicated to the county, and you're dedicated to everything that you're doing. And the energy that you bring is just amazing, and so we're lucky to have you on board here. And, you know, we look forward to continue working, you know, to complete that, address all, I won't say get rid of, but address all the homelessness, you know, throughout the county. So, thank you.
I have to say before I call Kaylee up here, because I'm embarrassing her, I know I am. Isn't that a great picture? That's a great look, that's a great picture. If only my pictures could look like that. Come on up, Kaylee, congratulations. Believe it or not, a new school year is approaching. Parents already have their school supply list, and we'll be stocking up on necessities for kids' school year. I just got confirmation of, of Max's enrollment in kindergarten at Paul V. Fly Elementary School, where I'm a proud graduate of. So, I can only imagine how the families are feeling gearing up for a new school year. So, we just want to remind everyone that we want to support our Monco families who struggle to afford essentials that many of us take for granted, and the county is hosting its annual Back to School Drive. And so, residents, businesses, and community organizations are encouraged to take part, donate supplies. The list of items needed is available on the screen as well as online. It can be delivered to our DeKalb Center in Norristown, that's our Health and Human Services building. Or to make it even easier, you can purchase directly from the county's Amazon wishlist and have them shipped directly. Last year, we collected over 11,000 items for 1,000 students. So, this drive really makes a difference in our community and makes sure that we set up families and kids for success. So, be sure to check out our website, and if you can, please donate. July is Disability Pride Month, and July 26 marks the 35th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. This month celebrates the history, diversity, and achievements of those in the disability community. It also is a moment to highlight why we need the ADA and the progress that still needs to happen to make our world more inclusive. Our schools, transit, businesses, workplace, and recreational spaces should be accessible to all. I really didn't have an appreciation for this community until both of my parents became disabled at the same time, and how difficult it was for us as a family to just even get them to doctor's appointments and the process that it took to even find adequate transportation. And so, I want to remind everyone that disability rights are civil rights. At some point in all of our lives, whether it be illness like my parents' injury, aging, or loved ones' needs, most of us will rely on the protections and accommodations that ADA provides. At times when we are facing cuts to Medicaid and other essential programs at the federal level, advocating for our disability community is more and more important. This is just one reason why this board has reaffirmed its commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion through our anti-discrimination proclamation and through the expansion of our DEI team. On Tuesday, July 29, that noon in the county, we'll honor Disability Pride Month with a special speaker series event. We belong here, making disability inclusion a daily practice. This will, event will help us all explore how to move beyond the symbolic gestures to proactive accessibility and inclusive practices. The session will be led by Damon Mancine, a certified professional in workplace inclusion. As always, I want to thank our chief, Donna, Donna Richmond, and her whole team, Nellie and Ashley, for your work on all of the programming that we've developed in the first half of the year. And then last, but not least, I want to take a moment to recognize summer 2025 cohort of county interns. We have interns working across the county and all departments. Our interns spend the summer learning and shadowing our county employees, participating in hands-on projects, and getting a taste of what public service and government career opportunities really look like. I want to thank our staff who stepped up to mentor these young minds and guiding our interns. I think we have the responsibility as leaders, as, as county government, to give these opportunities for those, I was going to say youngsters, I sound really, I'm really dangerous, so those youngsters. We have a responsibility to, to shape the next generation and giving them opportunities to explore career pathways in public service. I, I see some of our interns here. I hope that your experiences here not only help you gain the insight into the work of county departments, but also just helps you discover and lean into your strengths and interests for the future. So, I want all of our interns to stay in touch and keep us updated, updated on your pursuits, your education, and your careers. It's interesting, I was talking to my intern, Miriam, I, I'm, say hi, Miriam. Hi. Yesterday, and we were talking a little bit about, you know, the internship is not that long, it's, you know, it's six to eight, eight weeks. But I was talking to Miriam a little bit about what her experience was like, and I was asking her, like, what was like the best part of the, the internship? And she talked about, like, when she first came in, she was like so shy and didn't know, like, how to talk to, to, to people like Lee. She said, you were one of the hardest conversations she had. Not, not, not really, but like in that.
But one of the best?
One of the best. She said it was one of the best. But in that short period of time, right, over, as she became more comfortable, right, she, she could think through, like, what kind of questions she would ask when she had the opportunity to meet someone, and how much growth you've had in such a short period of time. These are the just little moments that, you know, I know that it takes a little extra time for us to bring in interns and, and have them shadow us, but I think it's something that we should continue to grow and scale as a county, and I, I wanted this program to be bigger in the, in the, in the years I've had. So, so Miriam, thank you. She met the governor on her second day of, of, of the job. So, to all of the interns, really, you all are bright and shining stars, and we're grateful that you chose to spend your, your summer here. So, I'm going to call each of you up individually. So, where's Ally from Planning? Ally, come on up. Let's give Ally. We'll have you just stand. Danya from HHS? There she is. Aaron from Planning? Come on up, Aaron. Sarah from HR? Colin from the Sheriff's Office? We've got Maggie from A&amp;I and Capital Projects. That's Maggie. Is Ryan from Career Link here? I don't see Ryan. Okay. And Miriam, come on up. Skylar, come on up. Skylar's Commissioner de Bello's intern. Caitlin, Inner Government Affairs, come on, come on up. Where's Lawrence from the Sheriff's Office? Lawrence, there you are. Keegan from the Controller's Office. Kendra is Commissioner McKeja's intern, come on up. Brianna? Come on up, Brianna from the Sheriff's Office. Who am I missing? Leslie, come on up from our Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. All right.
Can you all scoot down a little bit?
All right, can we, can we get her in? How do you think we should do it?
Two rows. Two rows?
All right, don't be shy. All right, can you get us, get us in? All right.
All right, right here. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, that's it for me. I'll turn it over to Commissioner de Bello.
Great.
Well, I know my first conversation with Lee was difficult as well, so I get it. So, don't worry about it.
They still are.
They still are. Doesn't get better, no. No, so thank you. A lot of good stuff going on in Montgomery County. I didn't get a chance to comment earlier about the wage changes here. You know, it's, it's definitely advancement here in the county. Being a previous small business owner, you know, one of the things that I, I had to deal with is you have, to hire good employees, you have to have and pay market rates. Doesn't matter what the minimum wage is, especially in a county like Montgomery County. You're paying market rates. If you want the good employees, minimum wage doesn't mean anything. It's, it's all about what you're willing to pay or what you're able to pay. I truly believe that it's always important to pay individuals for what they're worth, and, and that's always a good thing, no matter if you're a business owner or if you're county government. We need to be competitive in the marketplace. We need to provide a great work environment, which I think we strive to do that, and we, we work really hard to ensure that our employees are well taken care of the best we can. But on the flip side, we also have to remember that salaries are paid by taxpayers. And I'm not, I'm a fan of paying market rates, I'm a fan of paying what people are worth, but I'm not a fan of going out and saying that we're going to be the highest-paid county in the state. If that's what the market rates warrant, then that's what we would pay. But we also have to remember, and I've talked about this at previous meetings, we have over $30 million deficit going into 2026. The $2 million that was discussed earlier is just scratching the surface. We have a long ways to go. I know the community has talked with me, they've brought it up numerous times, that they can, they can't accept a 40, over 40% or almost 45% cumulative tax increase over the last several years. And we're going in a direction where we're looking at a large deficit. As the Board Commissioners, we're working hard, we're trying to figure out what we can do to limit or reduce that tax burden as best as possible. We have initiatives underway, we've gone to department heads, we've talked with them about looking at areas where we could reduce expenses. So, it's not that we're not trying, but I just want to, you know, lay out where we're at, and it's a very tough time to figure out. The good news is inflation has, has come down. We're seeing record lows, which is good. So, we're, we're in a good spot here in Montgomery County, but we can't just keep raising taxes either. So, we will continue to work hard as your county commissioners to do everything we can to reduce or eliminate that, that deficit. It's not going to be easy, it's going to require very tough decisions, but we're going to, we're working hard to do, and we're working with our CFO and all, it's his staff and all department heads. Everyone is working towards reducing and doing what they can to cut back on expenses. So, we'll, we'll keep you posted on that. But a lot, a lot more to come over the next couple, a couple months as we enter into the budget season. So, with that, there was a lot of, last week was, was a very busy week here in Montgomery County. One of the things, I won't be riding in the, what's it called, the Bend?
The Ben Franklin Bridge to the Shore.
Bend, right, Bend to Shore. I, I actually did years ago the City to Shore Ride, that 150-mile, when I was a lot younger. So, that was 75 miles each day, but I trained more than twice.
I was going to say, you said you are always going to stand with law enforcement.
I do stand with law enforcement.
Literally.
Well, I'll stand away. But, you know, last week, or the last meeting I mentioned about the wall that heals that was coming to Montgomery County again, I came here two years ago, and it came back last week, and it was that brought up to Montgomery Township. We, Commissioner McKeja and myself were able to attend the opening ceremonies on Thursday, but on Tuesday, I participated in the motorcade or motorcycle escort. So, I do ride a bike, I ride one with an engine on it, not, you know, I'm not as in shape as Commissioner McKeja. But I was, I actually did that ride two years ago, and I did it again this year. It's an honor. We started at Valley Forge Park, and we came through Norristown and made our way up to Mac. Vietnam vets and, and all the families of the vets, the fallen, Vietnam vets that were fallen. There's 58,000, I think it was 58,282 names, I think was the actual number on the wall. But we also pay tribute to not only the Vietnam vets, but all of that. I mean, and we, we talked about how, how amazing they are and how thankful we are that they, they made that choice, that decision to go and defend our country. And one of the things that I said during my remarks was that we, we, we talk a lot on certain days, especially like Veterans Day and all that, and we always say, you know, "Thank our veterans." And what I mentioned during the ceremony was that we should take the opportunity to thank our veterans every day. So, when you see a veteran, you know, if it's in a restaurant, or wherever, walking down the street, wherever may, wherever they may be, you know, take 30 seconds, 15 seconds, whatever, whatever it is, and, and thank them for their service, because we are the nation we, we are today because of the veterans. They fought for our freedoms, and they will continue to fight for our freedoms, and it's, it's just something that we, we need to remember. If you haven't got, if you got up to the wall, I, I hope you, it was meaningful, I mean, the way it's set up and how you could find names on the wall is incredible, it's all, they have a computer set up, you go, you give them the name, and they come back and they tell you exactly where to locate the name on the wall. So, it's just, it's just really well organized, but it's, it's really, it's really amazing event to be part of, and I'm glad that I was able to be, able to do the escort as well as participate in, in the ceremonies and, and that. So, yeah, so it was just a, it was just a great day, week all around. And then this weekend, I also, just by coincidence, participated in the Bikers Against Child Abuse Christmas in July. So, I was honored to rider, ride along with the BACA group on Sunday. So, yeah, my motorcycle got a lot of, got a lot of miles last week.
Commissioner DeBello, is that you?
Pardon me?
Are you?
Uh, in the blue bike in the front there, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Need to zoom into it.
No, don't go too close.[738.37][738.37][laughing] But I did participate in that, in the BACA, and it was, again, it was a great ride. We met over in Lansdale, and we came across, and eventually made our way to the Lower Providence Valley Forge Park, I mean, not Valley Forge Park, the Lower Providence County Park, where there was a, they had a cookout, and they had some kids there that, that were part of the programs that we offer here in Montgomery County. Again, it was just, just to be around such a, a group of people that are dedicated to, to, for a cause, and what I talked about there was, it's unfortunate that this is a cause that we have to be dedicated to, and hopefully someday, that cause completely goes away so they can pick something else. But until that, until that cause is out there, this group is, is, is amazing. And if you're not familiar with Bikers Against Child Abuse, one is, they're big advocates for child abuse, and they, they have, and they'll go to, and stand with children that are part of child abuse, they'll go to the courts, they'll, they'll stand in the courtrooms, they'll show support for the family, because too many times, the, the child is made to be, to be the, not the victim, but, I can't think of the word, but they're, they're just treated not in a good way, and they're intimidated, because they're in an adult situation, and the Bikers Against Child Abuse, what they've done over the years is they'll go there and support for the family, more importantly, the child. They'll go to the child's house, they'll do an escort from the child's house to the courtroom. It's just an amazing, amazing group of individuals, and what they're, what they stand for, and they raised, it was, you had to provide a $20 gift card, and I believe that they brought over $1,400 in gift cards that they donated to our Child and Youth Services. That will be used for, for those that might remember last year, and this has been going on for 20-some years, but last year, we, we did a toy drive, and, and we were over at our HHS building, we showed all of the Christmas gifts that were purchased for, for, for kids, and money that comes in from these gift cards is used during that period of time, too. So, and we also, we did have Santa was a part of leading the escort, so that was a good thing as well, you know, it's always good to see Santa Claus. So, again, it was a, it was a great day, it was, it was a great cause to be part of, and I look forward to being there to support them moving forward. And then just finally, I, I do the July, the July's Way to Go winners. So, I'm, just go through this pretty quick. So, first up, we have Laura Gonzalez, our Assistant, Administrative Assistant in our Department of Health and Services. Laura played an important role in the successful approval of our Norristown Housing Shelter back at the Norristown Zoning Hearing Board on May 14th. At the meeting, Laura delivered a powerful heartfelt speech that resonated deeply with many in the room, and we know the zoning board approval approved, as you know, the zoning board approved our shelter on DeCob Street soon after. So, we thank Laura for her advocacy and her courage to speak on behalf of homelessness. So, Laura, you here? Where's Laura? Where's she at? Oh, there you are.[965.06][965.06][applause] So, next up, we're gonna bring you up in a sec, okay? So, don't sneak out. Next up, we have Sandra Malito, Benefits Manager on our, in our HR team. Is Sandra here? Oh, there you are.[983.12][983.12][applause] I looked at you before, and I'm like, yeah. Sandra's coworkers say she's a treasure in the department, and they are awe of her vast knowledge of county benefits and insurance systems. She has been a tremendous asset to enriching and enhancing the county's benefits programs, such, she is compassionate, a compassionate guide for our employees as they navigate their health and wellness benefits. On behalf of the county employees, we are grateful for Sandra's leadership as our Benefits Manager. Thank you. Next up, we have Mary Hickory, Hickie, Hickory? Hick, what is it? Hickie. Accountant tech in our Sheriff's Office. I don't know if Mary's here. Mary has been with the Sheriff's Department for 19 years, and recently, she's gone above and beyond the job role, simultaneously helping our Civil Office with protection from abuse EFA cases. She has responded to constituents' phone calls and has provided a level of service to residents that would not have been possible without her jumping in. We want to thank Mary for her exceptional service to some of our vulnerable residents. Thank you, Mary.[1060.16][1060.16][applause] And last but not least, we have Casey Laurel, a BHF, BHC, BTC Coordinator in our Treatment Courts. I don't know if Casey's here. Nope. Casey constantly exceeds expectations and brings a positive attitude, reliability, and a willingness that most others. Her colleagues say she is an invaluable part of the Treatment Courts team. We thank Casey for their hard work, dedication, and compassion she shows us every day. So, I want to throw a big thank you out to all the Way to Go winners for July, and if the ones in attendance, come on up, and we'll take her, get you up here to get you on TV.[1108.12][1108.12][applause]
All right. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.[1116.12][1116.12][applause]
All right, so, we'll move on. I just wanted to make one comment just in regards to inflation. Inflation, actually, yesterday, a report came out that showed it accelerated. And so, you know, there are real concerns that we're hearing on a daily basis. I spent some time at the Food Pantry of Family Promise, High Salem Baptist Church, and seeing an uptick in, in use, and people, people coming in, and that's only gonna get worse with all of the cuts to SNAP. There are 67,000 people who rely on SNAP in Montgomery County. There are around similar number, 60-some thousand who rely on Medicaid, and about 12,000 are estimated to see that cut. So, costs are real, and I think by, you know, raising the minimum, it's one of the things that we can do to make sure that people can get by at a very difficult time. And, you know, I'm really proud that our office has found savings, and we actually have, are now the county, if we vote on this, with the highest minimum wage, but also are doing so with lower taxes. So, we didn't have the kinds of increases that we're seeing around the state, 30-plus percent, 23%, et cetera, and we have a really strong team that's working to make sure that we are efficient and maintaining low taxes while delivering on services and, and paying people what they deserve. So, you know, that's very much our commitment. We look forward to seeing a lot more work in that space in terms of efficiency when we get that operation, you know, up and running. It's just been here for a few months, but I'm really excited to see that we already had $2.5 million right away, and much more.
Can I just, just point a privilege? You, you can do both, right? We can, we can manage, try to, to balance the budget, right, and still take care of our people, right? Coming from the private sector, that's, that's what we did, right? And so, like, I think this board has a responsibility to do both, and I think that's what we have demonstrated, we're attempting to do here. So, thanks for, for your partnership on that.
Thank you. All right, so we will move on to announcements, and we're here from Bill Hartman, our Trails and Open Space Planning Manager, on the Open Space Grant Program. Monaco Forever Green.
That's what we're calling it.
I like it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. So, usually when I, well, let me say that a lot of the work that we do in our section in the Planning Commission has to do with trails, and I frequently come to you to talk about trail projects, but today, I'm coming to talk to you about the other part of work that we do, which is open space. And we don't talk as much about open space before you as we do trails, but as we all know, open space is a tremendous way to invest in our county and our residents, and the people who work here, and the people who visit here. So, we're super excited to share a new grant, formalized grant program that we're calling Monaco Forever Green. And just a, a word about the title, Monaco Forever Green. Monaco, self-explanatory. Forever is a nod to the notion of perpetuity, where when we provide these funds across the county, this is for the perpetual preservation of open space, so that it can't be developed in the future, and it will be protected forever. And then green, of course, talks about green spaces and open space. So, we're very excited to launch this. Before I get into the details of the program, I just want to talk a little bit about, just take a look back for a second. And as you know, the county has a really strong history of open space preservation over the last 30 years. We had two significant programs in '93 and 2003 that resulted in millions of dollars that were invested in open space preservation across the county, and thousands of acres that were preserved as a result. And that 2003 program spanned to about 2013. Since then, the process for investing in open space across the county has been a little less formal than it was during those grant programs. And so, today, we fund open space through our capital improvement budget, and we provide grants to nonprofit organizations and municipalities, nonprofit organizations in the land trust and conservation universe, and municipalities to help them protect open spaces across the county. And that allocation in the capital improvement plan is typically about $3.5 million. So, it's less than what we had previously been putting toward open space preservation, but still a really significant amount of money toward protecting open space across the county. And we've been successful with that capital budget money. We've preserved a number of properties around the county. Some of it is our county acquisitions, where we're adding to a county park or preserving land that the county then owns, and then in other cases, it's land that might be protected by a conservation easement or bought by a municipality or a nonprofit, and then it's protected forever. Despite that success, there are some, what I would call intrinsic issues with the way we've been handling this program over the last few years, which was the impetus for why we took a new approach to the program and formalized the grant program. One of the issues has been that there's been a, a lack of widespread knowledge that the county had this money available. I've talked to people in my five-plus years with the county where they've said to me literally, "You mean the county has money for open space?" And I've said, "Yes, we do. How can we help you tap into that?" There are others around the county, municipalities, and nonprofits who know that this money is available, and they come to us, and they seek grants, and we work with them, if it's a viable project, to provide money for their projects. But I would say overall, the, the broad knowledge of, of the availability of this money could be greatly enhanced. So, that was one thing that we wanted to address. Secondly, this new, uh, formalized grant program is taking a different look at how open space is defined, and I'll talk to you about that in a couple of minutes. And then lastly, typically in the past, when we provide open space funds as grants, we've required a one-to-one match, meaning if we're gonna offer a municipality, for example, $100,000 in open space funds, we ask that they provide a similar amount, another $100,000, a match from other sources, whether it be private donations or other grants. And that can be onerous to municipalities, especially those that don't have large operating budgets. So, those are some of the core issues that we wanted to address with this new, this new program. Next slide? That's okay. So, just a quick look at open space across the county today. This is a map that shows all the land that's permanently protected across the county. It's about 43,500 acres of preserved open space, and the different colors represent the different types of ownership of that land. And as you can see, it, it ranges from local or municipal land to state land, to county land, to the federal government, an example being Valley Forge National Park. Conservation easements are also a way to protect the land where it stays in the owner, the, the, the landowner retains ownership of, of the property, but it's permanently protected from further development. We have, as you know, a very successful farmland preservation program, which accounts for over 10,000 acres of open space as well. And then land trusts also own land in fee, and so that's a very small portion of it. But you can see that it's a, a broad mosaic of ownership types. I will say that in the municipal category, which is the largest, as you can see in that pie chart there, I will add that a lot of, you know, a number of those municipal projects that protected open space benefited from open space funds that the county provided during those two programs, starting in '93 and, and 2003. Next slide, please. So, the core tenets of this today program, there are really four of them. One, we wanted to create a more structured but manageable program. We have structure right now, but we wanted to tighten it up and make it more uniform, which we're going to be doing. We want to get the word out, number two. This goes back to what I said earlier about there just not being widespread knowledge that this money is available. We want to get the word out, we're gonna market this program, we're gonna send, and I'll talk about this a little bit later, we're gonna send letters to all the municipal managers, we're gonna have social media talking this up, we're gonna have a press release. We want people to know this money is available, and so that's a really component, an important component of this program. Third, we're gonna require a lower match than what I talked about earlier, and I'll tell you what that lower match is. land to the federal government, an example being Valley Forge National Park. Conservation easements are also a way to protect the land where it stays in the owner, the landowner retains ownership of the property, but it's permanently protected from further development. We have, as you know, a very successful farmland preservation program, which accounts for over 10,000 acres of open space as well. And then land trusts also own land in fee, and so that's a very small portion of it. But you can see that it's a broad mosaic of ownership types. I will say that in the municipal category, which is the largest, as you can see in that pie chart there, I will add that a lot of, you know, a number of those municipal projects that protected open space benefited from open space funds that the county provided during those two programs, starting in '93 and 2003. Next slide, please. So the core tenets of this program, there are really four of them. One, we wanted to create a more structured but manageable program. We have structure right now, but we wanted to tighten it up and make it more uniform, which we're going to be doing. We want to get the word out, number two. This goes back to what I said earlier about there just not being widespread knowledge that this money is available. We want to get the word out. We're going to market this program. We're going to send, and I'll talk about this a little bit later, we're going to send letters to all the municipal managers. We're going to have social media talking this up. We're going to have a press release. We want people to know this money is available, and so that's a really important component of this program. Third, we're going to require a lower match than what I talked about earlier, and I'll tell you what that lower match is in just a couple of minutes, just to keep you in suspense. But it's going to be lower than one-to-one. And so we want to make that more obtainable and accessible by all of our municipalities. And fourth, as I also mentioned earlier, we're going to expand our definition of open space, which I'll talk about right now, if you could flip to the next slide. So, as you know, if you, I think if you were to ask the average person what open space is, they would probably say, "Oh, it's large tracts of undeveloped land, it's woods, it might be open fields," and so on. And that's true. That is one way to look at open space. But open space is much more than those large undeveloped tracts of land. Open space can exist in rural settings, it can exist in suburban settings, and it can even exist in urban settings. And we want to expand how we're defining open space because we want to make the money that we're putting toward this program accessible to everywhere. So someone in the western part of the county, say in a Lower Frederick township, for example, is going to be looking at open space differently than someone who lives in Norristown. And we might protect a 100-acre parcel in Lower Frederick, for example, but we should also make this money available to protect an eighth of an acre, for example. In Norristown, say, a vacant lot that's been created because a building was demolished, and use that as a place where the people who live in these more densely populated areas can go and seek respite, sit under a tree, and enjoy themselves. So we want to make sure that we're spreading this money across all sectors and across the full spectrum of open space across the county. So this can include natural land, nature preserves, public parks, vacant land, as I just mentioned, community gardens. A community garden is open space. But most people wouldn't think about the community garden as open space, and, as I mentioned, urban green spaces. And in terms of uses and activities, most of this open space is going to be used for passive recreation, and when I say that, I mean hiking, picnicking, enjoying it without, you know, full activity that you would see in what we call active recreation. Active recreation is typically when you have facilities, like a basketball court or a baseball diamond. We want to also fund limited active recreation, but we're not talking about funding, for example, softball complexes here. There might be an active rec component to a piece of open space that's protected with these funds, but it's not going to be the primary thing. It's going to be secondary to the passive uses. We want these spaces to provide ecosystem services, meaning improving water quality, providing wildlife habitat, providing flood mitigation, storing carbon. All of those ecosystem services are really important as far as protecting open space, and as I mentioned earlier, respite. We want these to be places where people can go, clear their heads, and enjoy the outdoors. Next slide, please. So some of the basic program structure. The applications are going to be formal with uniform requirements. Timing, these are going to be accepted on a rolling basis. We had talked about having, for example, an April 1 deadline for these applications to the open space grant program. But we all know the reality is that open space projects can pop up at any moment, and so we want to make this a rolling program so that if someone in October learns of a vulnerable parcel that is under imminent threat of being purchased and developed, we want applicants to be able to come to us at those moments and respond appropriately, and we'll provide and respond to the level of urgency when that application comes in. Eligible applicants, I talked about, all 62 municipalities and conservation nonprofits. Grant amounts are up to $500,000. The match requirement is a minimum of 25%. So for a $100,000 grant, we're going to require that there's a 25% or $25,000 match for that grant. Again, lowering that to make it more accessible. The use of funds, these can be used for fee title or fee simple acquisitions, as well as funding conservation easement acquisitions, and all of them will have a, will be for preservation in perpetuity. There won't be a limited term, it'll go on forever, so that that land will be protected forever. The source of the grant funds, again, is our capital budget. We're proposing to fund it with approximately $2 million initially, and we think that that will be a good amount to get the program off the ground, provide, or generate interest, and for us to gauge how popular the program's going to be. And then lastly, public access. These are public funds. We want to make sure that these properties that are protected are available and usable by people who live in Montgomery County, work in Montgomery County, and visit Montgomery County. So public access is really important. The grant application process doesn't differ radically from the way we do it now. There will be a pre-application, followed by a full-blown application. Those applications will be reviewed by Planning Commission staff, namely the people in the Trails and Open Space section. Any proposals will then be taken to the county's open space board, and if the open space board feels that it's a viable and worthwhile project, they will make a recommendation to you, the Board of Commissioners, to allocate the funds for the capital budget, and then if you do, that will then move into, we will, the acquisition process will proceed, and then the grant dispersment will follow. Next slide, please. The grant evaluation criteria are pretty simple. There are eight primary criteria that we're going to use. I'm not going to go through all of these, but we're going to look at all different things, from what's this land look like? How are they proposing to protect it? Does this land jibe with other municipal open space plans or comprehensive plans? The county comprehensive plan, is it in sync with those plans? We want to make sure that applicants have the ability and the capacity to pursue these projects. We want to see what they're proposing from a cost standpoint, and of course, we want to make sure that we're addressing the project's potential to address disparities in access to open space. Projects that are proposed in areas that might not typically have open space available or open space projects, we would definitely take that into consideration. Next slide, please. So I talked about this a little bit earlier. We have a number of documents that we've been working on. I'm going to pull one up. This is a flyer that we've developed. Our grant group did this. They did an amazing job. Kudos to them. That's more of a promotional summary, and then we have a more detailed guidebook that gets really into the nitty-gritty of what is required in an application. We're going to be mailing those guidelines, the guidebook, as well as the flyer to all 62 municipal managers. We're going to be emailing it to supervisors. We're doing a full-blown marketing blitz here to get the word out, and we're going to be developing a logo which is to come. We're going to have a social media rollout, and we have already developed a program webpage, which is going to go live in the next couple of days. So this is moving along quickly, but efficiently and successfully so far. And then last slide, just a little bit on the timeline here. Our open space board did hear about this program. We presented it to them on June 25. We presented the program to the Planning Commission's board on July 9 last week. Obviously, we're here today talking to you about it, and the plan is that we're going to use the next six weeks to do these mailings, do the social media, get the word out, and then applications will become available on September 1 for the full rollout of the program. So that's what I've got. I just want to give a quick thank you to all the people at the Planning Commission who've been helping out. Dulcie Flaherty, one of the county's great open space advocates and stars, is here and has been really supportive throughout the process, so thanks to all of them, and thank you.
Great, thank you. And importantly, when are the deadlines for the applications?
I'm sorry.
I see that the program opens on September 1.
Right.
What are the timelines in terms of deadlines?
So we have, in the guidebook, we've committed to giving feedback and an initial assessment of the application within 10 business days, and then it will largely be driven by the dates of the open space board and commissioner meetings. So it's, unless it's an urgent project, it's going to have to go before the open space board twice, which is our standard practice. We don't like to introduce a project to the open space board and ask them to vote at the same meeting. We would have an introductory meeting the subsequent month. We would have the meeting to further discuss the project and have them make a recommendation. If they recommend it for approval, it would then go to the next commissioners' meeting. You know, if everything moved as efficiently as it possibly could, you know, you're probably looking at a three, four-month process from start to finish. As you know, settlement and closing on deals can take a long time. Sometimes our grant might be the first grant to feed a project, and in that case, it may take months before the project closes, because they may use our money to leverage other funds for the project. So we'll make our process as efficient as possible, but there are other factors that play into the overall length of our closing.
And just to sort of recap, so nonprofits, but also localities, apply, and what other kinds of?
Applications.
Those are the two categories, right?
Yeah, so all 62 municipalities, and then what we call conservation nonprofits. Some examples that you may be familiar with, Natural Lands, Whisick and Trails, the Heritage Conservancy, Penny Pack Ecological Restoration Trust, nonprofits that have a land preservation component to their mission and their work.
Great. Any questions?
I have just a few questions. Thank you. Very thorough in presenting. How many, do we know how many municipalities have open space funds, like budgeted open space bucket of money?
So, so I think what you're talking about is like an earned income tax open space.
Well, wherever it does, I mean.
Yeah, earned income taxes are typically the...
That's the source. How many townships have?
I think we have nine within Montgomery County. I will tell you that compared to our peers like Chester County, they have like 30-some-odd townships that have earned income tax open space funds. They're very aggressive in Montgomery County about earned income taxes as a means of funding open space. So Montgomery County has work to do in that sphere, and it's certainly something we should look at going forward.
Right, but again, earned income tax open space fund is two different things. You could use your earned income tax to fund or put money aside for, but how many townships have the ability that have open space reserves, money that they get through developer contributions? There's different ways of getting open space funds.
Yeah. Commissioner DeBello, I don't know the answer to that question, but what I will say to you is that I'm sure the majority of municipalities that have dedicated open space funds are funding those with EITs.
Whatever. I get it. I'm not asking that.
Okay.
Do we know, do we know how many townships are actively pursuing open space now?
Yeah.
62 now.
Yeah, in the past program, they have.
All 62 have.
Yeah, historically, I would say today, it's not that number.
So who, when we give this money to municipality or one of these conservation nonprofits, who actually ends up owning the open space then?
To a nonprofit?
Either township board or nonprofit. If we're, because what you're recommending is the county now is going to give the lion's share of the purchase price, 75% or more.
Well, two things. One, that's not necessarily true. The county's not always going to give the lion's share. If you look at properties on the eastern part of the county, for example, $500,000, which is the max grant amount in our program, is just going to be a small portion of what hooks those projects.
When I mean lion's share, I mean the contribution from the county is, because you're going from one-to-one match to basically one-to-a-quarter.
Correct.
So 75% of that 500, that, the larger portion of the money going towards the purchase is coming from the county.
That's correct.
So who would actually end up owning?
So in the case, if a municipality applies to us for an open space grant, they'll own it. If a nonprofit organization like a Natural Lands applies, they will either own it, or they will be the holder of the conservation easement that will steward and enforce that easement in perpetuity.
Right. And then whoever owns is responsible for maintaining it?
Technically, yes. I will say that not all open space is maintained.
Well, there's different categories of open space. I understand that. No, the reason I ask the questions is because if they could get up to $500,000, and if a municipality, like what you mentioned, is that could potentially be a portion of the purchase price of a property, right? Where's the additional money coming from?
So the typical, so let me say this. Historically, the open space board really looks to encourage a wide-ranging funding formula. In other words, if there's a county open space grant going toward a project, they want to see potentially municipal contributions toward that project. Private donations from, say, adjoining landowners can contribute, foundations can contribute money. We really look to have a broad mix of funding sources for that, so it can come from a number of different.
Right.
It would be rare where only county open space funds were being used for a project, because the open space board wants that diversity of funds.
So potentially, the township municipality could be actually putting more money in than the 25% that we're asking them to match.
Yes.
Of our 500,000.
That's correct.
So if that's the case, then what's the 25% match really doing?
It's providing some skin in the game.
But they have to have skin in the game.
Well, right, but I guess, that's true. I mean, in a case, say you have a $3 million property in, in Lower Marion, you're only going to get $500,000 from the county. They're going to need $2.5 million from somewhere else, right? And that's obviously way more than 25%. But there are going to be cases where the projects are smaller, and that the organization's not going to have that financial capacity. So that 25% is actually going to be more significant in terms of them needing to raise that money and provide it to a project. I just, I'm going to say lastly, I know we're going on here, but I have talked to people where the match requirement that we previously had was too onerous for them to ask for money from us. They didn't have the ability to provide $100,000, and so the project just dies. So by dropping it, we're hoping to enliven more projects that would otherwise not have materialized.
Yeah, I'd be curious, you know, I'm not really thrilled about the 25% match, but we'll have to keep, we'll have to monitor it as we move forward. Dulcie.
Do you mind if I make a comment, since I've been doing this since my hair was totally dark?
Dulcie's privileged.
You have to understand that what we're asking, once again, and we're delighted to have the county step back in as a partner to inform municipalities to make green, healthy, connected communities. We always used to say that we have a stool, a green space stool. We need multiple legs. A lot of times, it was the county, a municipal entity, and DCNR, the state. But you need multiple ways to fund these projects. They're complicated, and they're often expensive. By having the enthusiasm of our community, we get all kinds of people coming in to say, "We can see where our county tax dollars are being used." Usually, you guys spend this money, and it isn't viscerally experienced by every one of 62 municipalities. Every one of 62 municipalities has either a park, a trail, an open space that they enjoy. That's what we want to see in this one. We originally, to get people interested, had a 10% match, 10%. We had all, I think except one municipality participate in the first program, because you're giving them back, people in our community, their tax dollars, in something that really is beneficial, doesn't get used up, and doesn't go away. So that's why having a match is important, but having this wide array of fundraisers, like supporters and champions for our county program.
Great, thank you. All right, we've got to move on, but thank you so much for all of your work, you're keeping everybody, and, you know, I would love to see more utilization of all these programs and local officials. Maybe one of the things, we're going to have a lot of new people who are elected after November. I think it could be helpful to do a kind of briefing on Monaco 2040, on the open space program, on any ways that the counties can help local officials, so that could be something to work towards, too. Okay, thanks. All right, we will move on to our first public comment period. This is only for comments regarding today's pending votes, resolutions, bids, RFPs, and contracts. Do we have any commenters?
David Morgan.
I'm usually at meetings, but I had childcare last month, so it's that personal aspect of life, and so I mentioned, first of all, in your agenda, A5 mentions human resources. I like personnel for its personal meaning, so more can use personnel instead of personal human resources, I find the better. Then on B5, but before I get to that, B8 is really short. It's a bridge number zero, and I was joking around, we're calling before, is there a bridge negative one or is it a bridge negative, is that zero a real bridge? negative one or is it a bridge negative, is that zero a real bridge? So starting with zero. I guess he found something with Bridge Pike. That seems to be bridge zero. So there we go with that one. So hopefully everything's fine with that. Allocation's the right place. Then B5 is the larger comment I want to make, and that's for 35 law firms, which, when I first saw that last summer, I thought that was staggering to think about because the expense for law firms to augment our solicitors seems to be a huge burden to consider. I don't know what your spending record is on that, but after this whole year's gone by, have you found that 35 law firms have caused huge increases for the taxpayers? I'm here for the taxpayers, as you know. And so I know with every call being monitored, the clock runs. So I like to really know, is this really needed to have 35 law firms? Or so, or close to 35, what I count.
Well, you do realize that we're not calling all 35 all the time. This is just if, these are law firms that if there's something that comes up, we may have to call. There's a difference.
Okay, just wondering.
We're not contracting with 35 law firms. We're, we have 35 law firms in place that if something that comes up that we may need, that we don't have direct expertise for or support for, that's all this is. So we're not utilizing 35 law firms all the time.
Okay, it just rang a bell with me. So that if you've seen the year this one has passed, because it's one year old, that I see, how has the cost been? Has it been a really huge burden? Because as you mentioned, you talked about the deficit. I was going to talk about that next. What is the rolling deficit we're seeing this year? Because our tax increases have been, that's my calculation of line A, my tax bills have been 52, almost 52% in five years. And it's been steady, whereas some might have 23% one year. We've been always increasing our taxes 5, 8, 8, 13, and almost 10% the last five years. So speaking for the taxpayers, I'm glad you mentioned the deficit. And if we can get monthly updates about the deficit, it'd be great. Also, with the 1,415 million affording that project, I haven't heard any change in that amount. The Justice Center, I didn't notice there's trees out there. And I think they look pretty good. We got a lot of rain lately, but I have to water trees. I've done a lot of tree work with. Actually, the Open Space Grant we had in Amberboro, 36,000 for planting trees. And the planter planted and he watered them. So that's a cost we have to face in our tax bills which is going to put them up. And new positions. Every time I come in, there's a slip way back there. And the public should know how many new positions, which are not what we already have, but new expenditures that we have to afford come November, when that increase comes in. Also, I wondered in light of the hydro and prison projects, if they could be privatized totally.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Welcome back.
Yeah.
Good sir, doing okay.
Next up, Caitlin Distain. Caitlin Distain.
Hi, I was here for an off-comment, but just after hearing about the minimum wage increase, I just wanted to make a few comments here. I hear your desire to help people due to the inflation that we have seen that's thankfully begun to ease, you know, by providing this large minimum wage increase. And while I think there's good intent in that desire, I would offer that I believe that this will really cripple small businesses and negatively impact those who work for them.
Quick thing. It applies only to the county, not for businesses within the county. We don't have that authority.
Oh, okay. All right, very good. Well, that's helpful to know. When you reference businesses, I thought you meant all businesses. But what I will say, one other comment then on that note, is that yes, temporarily, I see that you guys provided this large sum that will help with offsetting that increase to that extent right now. But I think in the long term, you know, are we going to continue to see another big lump sum that's going to be eased in order to account for that? And as time goes on, those numbers do add up. And then how do you increase someone who's starting at $20? Like people should be paid based on their, their skill set and ability and all of that. And so I think this will become, if it's not this year, I think looking forward, if we look years forward, it will definitely impact the taxes in our county. I think it will bring them up substantially. So it's just something to consider in your vote today, so.
Yeah, just a quick comment. If the minimum wage had kept, had kept pace with inflation, it would be closer to double the federal minimum wage. I think different ways to calculate it, but it would be at least 11, not seven. And if it was, I think I've seen some estimates closer to 18. So we're just trying to keep pace with the cost of things. Go ahead.
Okay, we have somebody on Zoom, Julie Cordingle. Julie, can you hear us?
You're still muted. Anybody up?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you for allowing me to comment today. My name's Julie Cordingle and I'm a board member for the nonprofit Pottstown Rumble Volleyball Tournament, held each year for the past 33 years in the town of Pottstown. Now perhaps some of you, and I could be mistaken about this, but hearing that the words volleyball tournament, you may have just tuned out, thinking this is just another sporting event.
Is this about a comment for a vote that we're about to take? The comments right now are just for anything related to a vote that the commissioners are about to consider.
Well, this.
Well, we could come back to you at the, there's general comment. But the comment still has to do with an action that the board may take. But if there's something else you want to publicize, I would just share it with the comms team and they can consider that. Okay.
All right, well.
Thank you so much. We'll, we'll reach out. Go ahead.
I'm going to go back to the room and go to Christine Vora.
Good morning, commissioners. My comments are related to an action that you're going to vote on today. I wanted to walk over and thank you in person for considering the raising of the minimum salary in Monco to a living wage. Seven of my administrative support professionals, I think actually nine in the DA's office, will be affected by this in addition to 185 other public servants that are largely our administrative support staff. There are custodians. There are clerks. There are the people in our departments that make them go. Without them, we would shut our doors. We would not be able to function. And they are so often a group even in our office that I feel is often forgotten, often not thanked enough. So I want to thank you for not forgetting them today. In a time of rising inflation and economic uncertainty, fair compensation of public servants is hugely important. It's a necessity. So I consider this not just a gesture, but something really crucial that you're considering to do. I want to thank you for consistently standing up for the people that serve. That's a hard thing to do. I see you do it all of the time and I just really appreciate that leadership and wanted to acknowledge it here in a public space as somebody who works here and works with people that work here. It's so appreciated. It's making a real difference and it's seen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you and thank you to everyone on your team. Okay. All right. So that's it for our first public comment section. We will move on to the approval of minutes from last meeting. Is there a motion to approve the June 18, 2025 meeting minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners? Moved by Commissioner Winder, Paul Second. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are approved. Moving on to resolutions, we'll hear from Scott France very briefly. Authorization of planning assistance contracts.
Planning had our time, but thank you for all that. Yes, I have two contract renewals for our community planning assistance program. These are for Bridgeport and Red Hill Burrows, the program that allows us to partner with them and do the planning work so important to all of our communities. This will bring it up to 36 or continue our current level of 36 municipalities within the county. Just to cover quickly, Bridgeport's contract will include continued comprehensive plan implementation activities, including updating the borough's subdivision and land development ordinance, preparing specialized land use studies, developing streetscape design guidelines, and any other council-directed work. The Red Hill contract will focus upon council-directed services in the boroughs currently considering an update to off-street parking standards, development of main street design guidelines, and requirements for green parking and a sidewalk connections plan. As I said, both contracts are three years. The Bridgeport contract actually starts formally July 1st or has started and will run through June 30, 2028. The total cost of Bridgeport's contract is $59,708 over three years. The municipal share of that is $29,854. And for Red Hill Borough, that contract starts August 1st, runs through July 31, 2028, for a total cost of $54,516 and municipal share of $27,258.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve resolution number one as described by Mr. Scott France?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder, Sir Second. Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The resolution is approved. Thank you. Moving on to the annual action plan for the Office of Housing and Community Development, Kelly Silver will present.
Thank you, commissioners. Before I begin, I just want to thank you again for the nice surprise and commendation, but thank you for your leadership in supporting healthy communities, housing affordability, solving homelessness. I also have to take a very quick moment to, as I know that you know, leader is only as good as the people surrounding them. So the Office of Housing and Community Development, my staff, we're a small and really mighty team and our successes are shared successes and a lot of our great work is thanks to them. So just wanted to take that moment. Thanks. So to go on to business, one of the main things one of my office does is manage direct HUD entitlement grants from the federal government, which require final resolutions for submission of those plans. We receive three HUD entitlement grants that I will go over briefly in a moment. But every five years, we put together a five-year consolidated plan of how the goals outlining the use of that money. And then each year, we come with an annual action plan around that year's entitlement amounts and what we propose to fund. So that is what is being presented to you for resolution today. Next slide, please. So to quickly go over these HUD entitlement grants, the first one is Community Development Block Grant, which just celebrated its 50th year of success. It's one of the longest-running programs out of HUD. It has a wide range of activities that must primarily benefit low and moderate income persons and neighborhoods in Montgomery County, really helping to promote healthy communities and vibrant communities. And we receive about $3.5 million each year to help support these activities. Just note that there, there are caps for this grant on a 15% public services cap, 20% cap on administration and planning activities. So the primary activities for these grants are for capital work within low and moderate income neighborhoods in Montgomery County. Streets, sidewalks, public facilities, libraries, et cetera. Next slide, please. The second grant is the Home Investment, excuse me, Partnerships Program. This is the largest federal block grant to state and local governments, designed exclusively to create affordable housing and allows a lot of flexibility and for us to help promote homeownership activities and affordable rental housing and multifamily activities. We received about $1.3 million in entitlement this year. And next slide, please. Last but not least is the Emergency Solutions Grant or ESG out of HUD. This is funding for homeless services and is more service-oriented. And we received just under $300,000 out of HUD for this grant. We pair it often with our Continuum of Care or COC activities. Next slide, please. So we don't, out of my office, just rely on these three HUD funds. We did when our office first existed, but we really just acknowledging that so much more work needs to be done. We maximize impact by really going after matching and braided funding. ESG and the home program do require a match. We use our local affordable housing trust fund. We use the Human Services Block Grant from the state's Pennsylvania Department of Human Services. We apply to PHFA's Fair Program. We apply to the state's ESG program. We have some COVID dollars from CDVG as well as a Home for Good program out of PHFA. So we really leverage over $6 million in other funding sources, just because we realize how important this work is. Next slide, please. So one of the things for resolution today is to authorize for us to submit the five-year consolidated plan. As I mentioned, this is a five-year plan outlining how the three HUD entitlement funds must support certain goals. You will see the seven goals here on the screen. Goal one, to utilize these federal entitlement grants to rehab and preserve our existing housing stock. So examples of that is investment into our aging public housing stock, rehab for homeowners and owner-occupied housing. Goal two, create new affordable rental housing through loans. We often structure our funding as revolving loans for developers and in order to match low-income housing tax credits. Goal three, create new affordable homeownership opportunities. So supporting agencies like Habitat for Humanity or Genesis or other organizations that are acquiring blighted or vacant properties, rehabilitating them, and selling them to first-time home buyers. Goal four, ensuring that our activities are aligned with Your Way Home and our Continuum of Care activities around addressing and solving homelessness. Goal five, public facility and infrastructure improvements. So those are things like accessibility improvements, library improvements, streets, sewers, and accessible neighborhoods. We have planning and administration out of my office and then we can, we'll continue over the next five years to assist with the Section 108 loan repayment. And then we will talk about the annual action plan. Each year, we distribute a Notice of Funding Opportunity for these three HUD grants and our matching grants. And we distribute this to affordable housing developers, municipalities, as well as homeless services providers. Next slide, please. So these are the projects proposed to be funded. These are the municipal projects for community development. You'll see various boroughs. We have 58 participating municipalities. All municipal applications received are proposed to be funded with CDVG funding. You see street improvements. You see stormwater inlets. And you see investments into Cheltenham's Lamont Community Center, a public facility. Again, I want to stress that these sidewalk streets, stormwater are all directly benefiting low and moderate residential neighborhoods in Montgomery County. Next slide, please. So Your Way Home projects, primarily rapid rehousing and street outreach activities. So we have a youth dedicated street outreach, a 24/7 street outreach, as well as rental assistance programs and landlord engagement programs to help people get off shelters, out of the street, and back into housing. Next slide, please. We also see here, we really prioritize supporting our emergency shelters in Montgomery County through these HUD funds. We have supported historically the Two Salvation Armies as well as Laurel House, the Family Promise of Montgomery County that uses the interfaith model for sheltering. And then we will later this month talk about Code Blue funding, but that's not part of this specific plan. Next slide, please. We have public facility improvements. Indian Creek has various homes for people with developmental disabilities and they need rehab work on these homes for increased accessibility. So we are proposing to fund this public facility improvement through CDVG funding. Next slide, please. And then we have public housing rehab for Golden Age Manor, as well as a rental rehab here in Norristown to help revitalize and, you know, keep safe and accessible and high-quality affordable rental housing. Next slide. And then for our home allocation, which again is that specific HUD grant dedicated to increasing affordable housing, we're switching a little bit to a year-round rolling application, much like you heard with the green space, right, to be more responsive to opportunities, right? So we're proposing setting aside $200,000 in a rolling application for homeownership, homeownership, acquisition, rehab, resale. So again, that's kind of those Habitat for Humanity or other activities where they're rehabbing homes and making it available to first-time home buyers, as well as a portion of funding to help with match requirements from low-income housing tax credit for affordable housing rental development. And then here you see our planning and administration activities, which help fund the great work out of our office, as well as fair housing work out of the Housing Equality Center of Pennsylvania, as well as our historical Section 108 loan repayment. So we had a public comment period where this was put in public newspapers, on social media. We walked quite a few agencies and people and the public through this, both our five-year goal plans, as well as the proposed funding. We received feedback. It was really wonderful public education and all comments were accepted and incorporated into the plan. Some of the funding you saw today was already approved at the June 18th, but the HUD funding, those three grants, can only be authorized after the public comment period and is presented for consideration and formal adoption and resolution today. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve resolution? Is there a motion to approve Resolution Two as described by Ms. Kaylee Silver? Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Any second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? I think you got a fair share of comments today, but thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Consider appointments and reappointment to the Parks, Trails, and Historical Sites Advisory Board. Is there a motion to approve the appointments as described in Resolution G3?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The appointments are approved. Moving on to the personnel list. Certain sounds you can turn off, others you can't, but I don't know who's bummed. But Tony Brew, go ahead.
Hi. Good morning, Commissioners. You have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated July 15, 2025, with a timestamp of 2:50 p.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the July 16, 2025 personnel presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is approved. Thank you. Moving on to Section I. Is there a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The bids and RFPs are approved. Moving on to Section J. Is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B?
Second.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contracts approved. And moving on to Section K. Is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit C?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion to approve contracts are approved. Yeah, so the motion is approved. All right. Moving on to general public comments. Do we have any commenters?
Yes, we do. Kristi Yangon?
Okay. I prepared a written statement to make sure I get this all correct. Over the past few months, several Montgomery County leaders have stated that they won't sign 287G agreements, honor ICE detainers at Montgomery County Correctional Facility without judicial warrants, or allow local law enforcement to collaborate with ICE outside of legal requirements. Thank you, too. This is a great start, but there's an enormous amount of confusion and misinformation on these issues right now. We urgently need Montgomery County to adopt a resolution that clearly limits collaboration and communication with ICE. This resolution needs to be easily accessible, unambiguous, enforceable, and available in multiple languages so that residents know their rights and understand what protections are available to them. As it stands, a lot of residents are living in fear while law enforcement, ICE agents, and people working for ICE have free rein to do whatever they want. As an example, when I was at MCCF a few weeks ago, I interacted with a security guard who claimed not to know that the warden had recently decided that they would stop honoring ICE detainers without judicial warrants. I'd heard about this policy change in the news, but the security guard was annoyed when I asked for clarification and refused to answer any of my questions. This news article reported that the warden had announced this policy to the board two weeks before my encounter, but I wasn't able to figure out whether if this policy had taken effect or whether there are consequences for employees who don't follow it. I still don't have an answer for this. This is my first-ever interaction with MCCF, and it left me with the impression that at least one employee there is eager to work with ICE regardless of policy. The increase in ICE activity serves no purpose other than to terrorize our community, and it's been documented that people conducting these raids are damaging property, impersonating law enforcement, and abducting people without warrants, none of which is legal. These raids are tearing families apart, hurting the economy, and ironically eroding trust in local law enforcement. When Republicans say that these raids are necessary because some immigrants are breaking the law, but then do nothing or even cheer when the people hunting them down break the law, the only conclusion we can draw is that this is purely based on racism. I'm asking you to take action and protect our county from ICE's lack of humanity and lack of respect for due process. Please enact a welcoming county resolution before more harm is done.
Yes, Congress.
Stephanie Zinssen?
I'm going to read also. First, I want to apologize for my appearance. I woke up this morning at 6:30 a.m. and threw on the stained shirt, no makeup. I was sweating because just before I came here, there was a major ICE action in Norristown. About 30 agents and as many vehicles went to the Supergigante. A third of the agents were in full tactical gear and long guns. And although we believe they had a warrant for the owner of the store, they took collateral. They took people shopping. They are using single warrants to legitimize their unconstitutional arrests of many and bringing it out and bringing it out, bringing in out-of-state sheriffs and local police officers to make it easier for them to kidnap our neighbors. I was coming today anyway to ring the alarm bell for Montgomery County. And ever this morning, it's even more agents, even more urgent. People of Montgomery County, I'm speaking to all of us today because what's happening here cannot stay in the shadows. Over the last six weeks, ICE has swept through our county like the rain and the storms that we've been having. They've been surveilling or making arrests without warrants in Ambler, Concha Hockin, King of Presia, Pottstown, Maple Glen, Hatfield, and Norristown. They are taking people from their families, most often on their way to work. Many of these individuals have no criminal record at all, and if they do have a record, it's often an old DUI or immigration case that's already tied up in legal proceedings. Families are being left behind, facing impossible situations, sudden loss of income, huge legal fees, and children are asking where their parents are. Many of them are citizens, these children. The mental health toll is immense for those detained and for the loved ones left behind living in fear and uncertainty. And now immigration has announced it. They will no longer allow bond hearings, trapping people in overcrowded detention centers where they face a long list of abuses. Let's be clear, Latino communities in particular are being targeted again and again, and they are also the backbone of our local economy, working in business, construction, healthcare, food service, and more. The same neighbors who keep our county running are living under threat day after day. ICE is smashing windows, forcing open doors, detaining people without warrants, pretending to be local police, using fake sirens and lights. They lie, they deceive, and time after time, they act in a way that violates the basic protections guaranteed by our Constitution. Rights like due process, privacy, and equal protection under the law are being ignored in the name of enforcement. I know many of us feel powerless. We look at the federal government and think there's nothing we can do, and I know you feel like that, too. But we're living in unprecedented times, and it's going to get worse if we stay silent. What's happening when ICE rolls into Norristown in armored vehicles dressed like soldiers? It happened today. What happens when fear spills out from our immigrant communities into every community? When constitutional rights become optional and nobody feels safe? This is bigger than immigration. This is about the soul of our county. So I'm calling on the people of Montgomery County, pay attention, know your rights, help your neighbors, learn, speak out, and refuse to let these abuses happen in silence. Organize, show up, and protect one another. We can't wait for someone else to save us. It's on us, all of us. We need you to back us in whatever way you can because it's going to get more dangerous. People are going to get hurt. Your citizens are going to get hurt. People are going to die. We need whatever resources and whatever help you can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex Egan?
I am handicapped, and I am shaky, and I am afraid I will not sit at three minutes, so I asked this young person to read the statement.
So excuse my appearance as well. I was out with Stephanie and a bunch of people in our community today to see what ICE was up to. My name is Alexandra Egan. For over 30 years, I have lived on West Marshall Street in Norristown. At this moment, I am one of the residents, homeowners, one of the business people, a member of the Monco SAAAC, and a friend of the Hospitality Center. I am paying my taxes ahead of time for services that do not, that have not always been delivered. But I, like my neighbors, and the fact that I am in the historic district, I love the beautiful architecture, the river, and access to the stores and transportation. In just the last 50 years, Norristown turned from one of the best places to live in the U.S., the proud and beautiful county seat, to a capital of the poor, sick, unfortunate, forgotten, and dependent on others for resources. And for years, residents have been living here, that have been living here, have been ignored and often disrespected and abused. We are a municipality with a home-rule charter status, but majority does not know or care what that is. Because of this sometimes ignorant and disrespectful approach, so many rules and ordinances are simply just ignored. Ignoring zoning laws is one of the most damaging problems and disturbs a community. It disturbs the peaceful and successful coexistence between all groups in Norristown. It disturbs and paralyzes possibilities of any progress for all of us. We, as a community, have already faced the loss of many businesses, hospitals, parks, and schools. They mostly were replaced with all kinds of nonprofit enterprises. Investor landlords are making a lot of money here. Local government is losing control. Norristown's beautiful houses are chopped into many apartments. Homelessness is almost a taboo that the rest of the county doesn't want to face. I'm here today representing the West End homeowners, residents, parents, business owners, members of the Monco SAAAC, friends from Monco Hospitality Center, and those that cannot ask a loan for help. The members of the Monco SAAAC located on 536 George Street cannot be a part of the Hospitality Center. The Hospitality Center located on the 600th block of Chain Street, same building, cannot be a part of the Monco SAAAC. But a very tragic circumstance created exactly this situation. It's an emergency situation. We're asking the Commissioners in Montgomery County to help the Hospitality Center to buy a building in the proper zoning area as soon as possible. At this moment, the community is waiting for some kind of miracle. For a long time, very long time, we have been a dump for the entire Montgomery County. Today, you can help us. Thank you on behalf of Alexandra Egan.
David Morgan?
I'd like to first mention that for helping our employees, we have the wage increase, but also maybe to consider flex time with taking SEPTA, more employees that take SEPTA. I've taken buses here myself and did it today. For the visit I did to Ardmore's meeting, I saw these in place. These are the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services Parent and Infant Resource Guide, and there's a wealth of help for people. If they're having a child, it's really, every page almost has something about having babies, where it goes from adoption to basic needs, pregnancy and baby care, maternal-child health, home care, including Monco mamas is in there. Not maybe everything is in there that could be there, because I think there's a place, Amneon, in Norristown, which has been very close by to here, which I think should be included if it's not in one of those pages. But that would be good to have at the meetings here, have in the back table, to have that for people to access, and if they know someone who needs support in having a child, that's really great. An interesting statistic I heard, which is concerning, is that the average woman has 1.6 children in America, according to the CDC, compared to 2.1 is replacement. So we're on a lower trajectory towards not having enough children being born in America. So I think if we can make efforts to work on that and have this guide around, it would be really encouraging to people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Congress.
Sharon Vitale, it looks like?
Sharon Hailma.
Okay, sorry, it didn't look like that.
Hello, I'm Sharon Hailma. I serve on the Norristown Area School District Board of Directors, but I'm here as a concerned citizen. I also came upon the ICE intervention this morning. My daughter and I were driving by after dropping the younger children off at daycare, and it was heartbreaking to watch these men being taken into these vehicles. It was also very upsetting that one of the protesters that was part of the group that I joined, a gun was pointed at her by these ICE agents. I don't know why. And then as people came along, we made sure that these people who were non-white didn't stay long because we knew that at any second, it could turn on them, and they could also be removed, because there were not, as she said earlier, warrants for the other people, just for the business owner. And it's heartbreaking. I've lived in Norristown, in the greater Norristown area, for my entire life, which is 52 years, and this is my community. These are the people that I consider my family. You know, it's, I raised my daughter here. My now sister moved here to be with us, and we don't feel safe anymore. And I never felt unsafe until very recently. And it's scary, and it's, I don't know where we stand on this, but the fact that an ICE agent pointed a weapon at someone who was not, and, you know, she was just disagreeing with him, it's not good because it just takes one slip of the finger and it ended tragically. So I know that you're all aware of this happening, but I think something needs to be done because they weren't identified as ICE agents on their gear. They all had camouflage on, they all had masks on. We don't know who they are. And as Commissioner Winder knows, our children in our schools are scared. Our valedictorian this year, his parents did not attend graduation in person because they were afraid of ICE. There's no reason that we should live in fear in this country. I love this country, but I'm not very happy with it right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kayleen Durstein?
Yes, I understand that we recently enacted policy to block ICE and further solidify Monco as a sanctuary county, so just came to share some thoughts. I, myself, have greatly wrestled with this topic of illegal immigration because I've known some really wonderful people who came illegally and worked towards citizenship and are now proud Americans. I also had grandparents who were immigrants post-World War II. But I believe that much of the illegal immigration has changed over the last few years, which has created more nuance to this topic than was prior. What we've witnessed under the Biden administration was a complete opening of the border, and that chaos, that allowed many traffickers, terrorists, and criminals to capitalize on the chaos and enter our country in numbers like we've never seen before, and this is all really well documented. And we have thousands of kids that just went missing in our nation, probably due to trafficking over the border. Unfortunately, this wide-open border really changed the illegal immigration in the United States from where it used to be just people wanting to come and work for their families due to the lack of opportunity in their home country, to instead mostly criminals, terrorists, and many traffickers of children and drugs who then came across our border in recent years. And so our, you know, we are a nation made of immigrants. That is the American dream, to make something from nothing, and we welcome those law-abiding immigrants who want to assimilate, work, and contribute to society, as many in our communities here in Monco are. But when you have a free-for-all and chaos at the border and millions coming into our country who we can't screen and see, that's when criminals take advantage, which many did. And there have been too many Lake and Riley's and people who have lost loved ones at the hands of criminals in the past few years who have ones at the hands of criminals in the past few years, who have crossed our borders just in the last few years. So we need to have law and order in this country and in Montgomery County to protect not only American citizens, but the very large legal immigrant community that we have here, as well as all the law-abiding people that are currently residing in our county, whether they're legal or illegal immigrants. Law and order has to be kept. And so when, when the Trump administration did come in, I reached out to legislators to ask if they would be targeting every illegal immigrant, or just those involved in criminal activity. And I was assured that ICE was focusing on those engaged in criminal activity. And so some may get picked up along the way who are hanging with those who have a record, but their focus is criminal activity in the states. So is it not your job to protect the law-abiding people of the county, both immigrant and citizen? Because I can tell you that immigrants I know would like to be protected. And a sanctuary county does not give sanctuary to law-abiding citizens or law-abiding immigrants. It gives sanctuary to illegal aliens who seek to commit criminal acts in our streets. So I hope you will choose to protect the law-abiding people of Montgomery County by working with the federal government and ICE.
What was your municipality?
Frankonia.
Thank you.
Yeah. Kayleen Durstein, Inney Valley.
Joely Lee. Sorry. The biggest thing that I see that's changed is that immigrants are getting browner. And to have an over-generalization in terms of the people that are getting picked up in Norristown is just irresponsible. Because I promise you, some of the people that are getting picked up were just going to work and don't have criminal records. And that's what people are coming to this boardroom concerned about. So we all have a responsibility, right, to not, like, people have been coming here, like, through legal means and illegally for decades. Think about the people that came to Ellis Island. Did they, I mean, it's, I mean, it's just, I'm sorry, but it's, it's just, why was that okay? And today is not? And to over-generalize the people that have come here for a better life is just, that's not who we are, Monco. I'm sorry, but.
No worries. I was gonna say my comments, but I'll, I'll just say.
I was gonna say mine, too. I'm sorry.
Yeah. They just gotta get a warrant. What the warden said is that they require a warrant from every jurisdiction, and now they're asking ICE for the same thing that they ask every jurisdiction. And that was the decision of the warden and the prison board, who engage in these kinds of, you know, of, they're thinking about public safety all the time. People in law enforcement are thinking about public safety, and they abide by certain processes that, you know, respect individuals' rights, and that's what's happening. All ICE needs is a warrant, and they can, not only, I think there was an incorrect statement made somewhere, but, you know, they, and, you know, they have access to wherever they're going, whether it's a county-owned facility or otherwise, because no one can say no to judicial warrant without, you know, being held in contempt, or, you know, that would be disobeying the law. We're not. We're actually following the law. So I think that's important. But there were a lot of things that were wrong that I think Commissioner Winder wanted to comment, which is, I mean, there have been 11 or 12 million people undocumented in this country for a very long time, and it's been around the same number for, for a long time, including when President Trump said he was gonna build a wall and stop this. There's plenty of undocumented people in the country at that time, plenty of people coming through, and most people don't cross the border. They actually are on a plane or over state visa or something like that. So. Right, right. But.
Jay Lee.
Yeah, go ahead. Clear light? Yeah. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Jay Lee. I'm an organizer at the中心. Today, I want to speak, since now we're talking about the law and order, I want to speak for the importance of we, everyone living in this county, to know what our rights are, and how legally acceptable ICE operations are, to protect ourselves, our neighbors, our family, our friends. I just read about 32,000 as the projected number of ICE arrests happened June nationwide, which is a historically high number. And we hear ICE arrests in our county daily basis. It's really sad to see if this is the new reality we are living in. Then now I would have to raise a question about the legality of those ICE enforcement actions. Does ICE always bring the legitimate warrants signed by the judge to people, people's home, when they prevent people from their cars? Are they giving enough time for people to read and look for their names and judge's signs? Does ICE always bring the legitimate warrants to small businesses, restaurants, and grocery stores, when they stop workers and shoppers to arrest them? Shall we, as residents of this county, allow ICE to stop us for our skin color, the clothes we wear, and take us for not carrying ID when we are just walking around the neighborhood? This is not just about immigrants. This is not just about the immigration status. We can, we should make sure, I mean, we can make sure our county officials are not collaborating with ICE unless they're presenting the judicial warrants. And thank you, commissioners, for your continued efforts. But I think there are more proactive actions that our government officials and law enforcement officers can do for the public safety of our county and in the municipal levels. If a law enforcement officer sees an ICE agent breaking the law and violating people's rights protected by the Constitution, shouldn't he or she be able to say something about what they are doing in her or his own jurisdiction? If shoppers are in risk of being taken while they are shopping at their local grocery, if workers are taken while they are providing services to the local residents, building the local infrastructure, how can local economies thrive? It really is a critical time for our county to stay together and fight against the threats to our county. So please, everyone, let's step up and stop unlawful federal arrests, inhumane and discriminating treatment of residents. And that's all. Thank you.
Next up, Shanti Mahira.
Good morning, commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you. I relocated from Boston about 12 years ago, because I love the architecture of Norristown, and it provided me the kind of housing that would have costed me millions in Boston. So I own a house on Slambridge Street, and I have just seen my community deteriorate in those years that I came. I encouraged one of my friends to relocate here, because he was my best friend, and he bought a house on Chain Street. But he got ripped off by many contractors, and he never had the opportunity to finish the house. So I'm managing the house, and we just released, recently had the Hospitality Center moved into SAC building. And in the short period that they came, they broke down the side gate and dumped a lot of their belongings in the property, defecated in the property, and just brought a lot of trash in a very short period. But besides that, I have noticed that there is a huge housing homeless problem in Norristown since I came here. It hasn't got better, even though I hear a lot about housing funds and housing for the homeless. It's deteriorated. And I'm a senior citizen. I came here to live also because of the transportation access. So I don't have a car, because I live a green life, and I walk the same journey that this now Hospitality Center is located. If you go there at 7 o'clock in the morning, it's about 30 guys who are there, guys and women, in a totally residential area, where across the street are senior citizens and children. And I don't know how this Hospitality Center got moved into the SAC building, which is, I'm a member of SAC also, which is the senior center. So we are now housed in the same building with a bunch of homeless people, which I have great sympathy for. But I hear a lot about housing monies available for homeless and for housing. But somehow, we seem in the West End to be getting a big brunt of it. And I am asking you, please, to recognize that our community, our gorgeous West End, it's such a beautiful historic area. I grew up in Boston in the same kind of community, where there was a lot of drugs and homeless lives, and we just had one perfect mayor who recognized that if you integrate this, instead of dumping it all in one area, the whole community benefits, and that's what happens. And Boston went from a place where I couldn't walk as a student, to where I was shopping for my groceries at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, and knew that I was safe. And I walked to the train, I walked to the buses, and I can't do it. I'm scared. I live alone, and I'm petrified of the journey I have to walk from my house, because it's getting worse. And I'm pleading with you, please, we've got to address the homeless situation and do more, instead of just putting it in the West End, because that's what's happening. Alex, who is here, she spoke to the issue, so I'm just following up on that.
Thank you.
But there are more people like me, including my friend, who I encouraged to move to Norristown, but he isn't, because this is what's happening to the properties. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, just a point of clarification. The Hospitality Center is a separate, is not a county-run facility, so I want to make that clear. And I would encourage you also to go to the borough of Norristown, because they did not get the zoning approval for the building that they were going to move to, hence the reason they ended up at the SAC. Norristown is, I bought my first home in Norristown, and we've done a lot of work as a county. We just recently got zoning approval to open a transitional housing program for people like the people that you're seeing to go to and have the wraparound services. So we just got that approval. So we are working, I appreciate you coming here and relocating here, because this is a great community. We are working to do a county-operated in partnership with RHD program in Norristown. We do not control the Hospitality Center.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just saying that the whole, the whole idea now is that Norristown has become a dumping ground, and Alex has lived here for more years than I have. And in the decade I've been here, I have not seen any improvement. It's just got worse. It's just more and more homeless. It seems to be the kind of place where, even though it's Montgomery County, it seems to be a selected area where they said, oh, it's okay if those people are there.
I just, I mean, I think it's, the, certainly understand that.
I don't see it happening elsewhere.
We're trying to ensure that, that every municipality in Montgomery County does their fair share in terms of helping with this, this issue. There are people that are here in Norristown now that have become homeless, and we're trying to address that situation. So you're right. The state closed the only single adult shelter in 2021 without a solution. And so we're trying to get us all back on.
It should be a Montgomery County solution, not a Norristown.
And so, and we have multiple solutions happening currently.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I just wanted to.
I appreciate if you can use some of the funding that I hear about this morning to create.
Understood.
A solution to this, because we are losing people like me. I, I came here because I loved everything about Norristown, but now I live in fear.
Understood.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
R. Furman.
Good morning, R. Furman. New Hanover Township. I have attended and commented at a number of meetings. It is essential to have public meetings for transparency. It would also be more effective for taxpayer citizens of Monco to have meetings in the evening. Most working, taxpaying residents are working and in meetings from 10:00 to 12:00 on Wednesdays and Thursday mornings. Taxpaying citizens of Monco also come to comment on agenda and non-agenda items which affect quality of life in Monco. The chairman chooses their opening comments. Sometimes it is close to an hour on often political comments which affect the people. And yet, when the comment period for the public finally comes around for agenda items, that we have waited an hour or so through these commissioner comments. If our comment is on what you talked about at length, we, the people, are forced to wait until the end. Commissioners and citizens are equal taxpayers of Monco and should be treated as such, listening and learning from all of the people and all of our, all of our comments. I also want to comment on the important role of ICE agents. Our federal government's most important job is to keep us safe. They are professionals. They have legal procedures and processes. Our local law enforcement and agencies appreciate the value of their essential work. Vilifying their work by indicating that we will not follow their processes and procedures have compromised the safety of citizens. And I understand that there's always two sides to a story. But you need to listen to both sides and appreciate those sides. Thank you.
We're moving on to Zoom. Julie Cordingle.
Julie, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me? Okay, so I'm back. All right, so this, this is kind of going along with the, the woman talking about the dumping ground in Norristown, and also about the, the comment section at the end of this very long meeting. All right, so anyways, again, my name's Julie Cordingle, and I represent the Pottstown Rumble Volleyball Tournament that's been held in Pottstown for 33 years. And I want you to know that the rumble is one of the, the jewels of the AVP, the Association of Volleyball Professionals, and those are the, the players that go to the Olympics. So this is a huge tournament. It is the largest in the United States, and it happens in Pottstown. There's over 7,000 players that come from all over the U.S. and the world. It brings revenue to the restaurants and the eateries in the area, to the hotels, to the Airbnbs, and not to mention putting a positive spin on the reputation of Pottstown, which, let's face it, needs all the help it can get. Pottstown and Norristown are notoriously known for not good things, unfortunately. So that brings me to why I'm here. I need to, I'm the voice of the rumble's dissatisfaction and dismay at the recent decision to house the homeless in a hotel which overlooks Memorial Park. And how bad could it be to house the, the homeless at that hotel? Well, in the 33 years that I've been involved in the rumble, our tournament has never had to pay for outside policing. And this year, we spent $6,000 to get an outside security force to monitor the homeless people that have the ability to look over the field and to, to come down to the tournament. Now, I have no problem with that. That's, that's wonderful. However, we had junior teams of 12- and 14-year-old girls that were being approached by homeless men asking for money. There were numerous occasions of loitering around players' things, so that our players could not go and enjoy the day without fear of their, their things being stolen. And at night, there were four tents that happened to pop up in the field that belonged to homeless people.
Thank you. Thank, we're at three minutes, but I appreciate your comment, and, and we can follow up if, if, if there's a way. a way.
Moving on to Marilyn Muir on Zoom.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Marilyn Muir, Lower Salvador Township. I am responding to some of the comments from the last commissioner's meeting. In the last commissioner's meeting, there was outrage expressed over deportations. One reference was the deportation of Kilmar Abrego Garcia, a Salvadoran national who was deported to El Salvador and then returned. The media indicated he was returned because he was illegally deported, when in fact, this was fake news. Garcia was returned to face federal human smuggling charges in Tennessee. He will then be returned to a third country, not his native El Salvador. There was a criticism of a statement made by President Trump. Immigrants were poisoning the blood of our country. This again is fake news. The comment was taken out of context. The comment was made in reference to the drugs and fentanyl being brought into our country through the border. There was also a reference to the 1,200 January 6 prisoners as being criminals. Most were citizens of our country who were ushered into the Capitol by Capitol Police. Let's talk about the 4,245 acts of clemency granted by Joe Biden and done, more than likely, by the Auto Pen. This crime is currently being investigated.
So quick, sorry, quick clarification. You're welcome to have any general public comment that relates to business that may come before the county.
I'm commenting on comments that were made at the last meeting.
If the comments have to do with, just before the county, you can have a comment, but we don't have to talk about the Auto Pen.
That was my, extended my comment on the Auto Pen.
Or any other topic before, which we may not have business, but sorry.
Well, you allow.
Do you have any comments on county business?
It doesn't have to be county business. It's a general public comment, and I'm commenting on comments that were made at the last meeting that you were perfectly happy. There was one woman who sat there and attacked.
Sorry. Do you have any comments related to county business? That is the rule. Yes, they can be general comments, it could be business in the future, but they have to be related to county business.
Well, these are comments on the comments that were made at a commissioner's meeting.
Do you have any further comments related to county business? Okay, we'll move on to the next comment.
Last person is Flor Jasmine Danny. Flor?
Hi, yes, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to talk today to pose a question to the commissioners. I'd like to ask what exactly we are supposed to do when faced with people that claim to be ICE? Because ICE does routinely mislead people by dressing in plain clothing, pretending to be police, using other fake identities. And I do want to point out that there have been multiple case, like documented cases of people impersonated ICE in South Carolina, Florida, Utah, and in Pennsylvania. Close to Monco, there were two prominent cases that were featured recently in the news. On Saturday, February 1st, Temple University student, even, I'm going to butcher the name, but Stale Clan, as well as two other unidentified suspects who are currently still large, emulated ICE agents at a Temple University campus. And also on Sunday, June 8th, there was an ICE impersonator in Philadelphia that zipped hide a woman and stole $1,000. Monco County is where we are trying to live our lives in peace, but there is no peace with these racially motivated hunts for people. What are we actually supposed to do if someone randomly decides to take us because they've profiled us as somebody to hunt? I think that while we do, while there is a welcoming ordinance, it doesn't do enough. And standing up for immigrants or not doing enough to stand up for immigrants hurts everyone because despite our legal status, how hard we work to get our citizenship, people are constantly being racially profiled for not being white. We live in constant fear of going outside because someone might hurt us for not being white and therefore being a target. I need to remind you also that today's kidnappings of immigrants to be put in prison is just an example of history repeating itself here in America. We did used to have Japanese internment camps during World War II. And despite Nazi Germany, you know, being of German origin, there were no German-origin immigrants that were detained during that time, only those of Japanese origin, regardless of their citizenship or criminal background.
We can have it one policy differently.
Are you, are you done with your comment?
Yes, I would like to know what it is that we are supposed to do.
So anyone's free to respond, but this is for public comment. So are you, you're done with your comment? Just confirming?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next comment here. I'll respond at the end of all the comments.
That's the last one.
So just on the immigration matters, I understand how the actions that are taking place in our communities are creating an atmosphere of fear. And what I would encourage folks who are here or elsewhere who are looking for ways to be advocates for immigrant communities is that, like, we have a Congress that just passed a law that funded $175 billion towards ICE and this enforcement, and there's going to be a lot more of it. And members of Congress, including two that represent Montgomery County who voted for the bill, should hear from you. That, that's, that's, I think, you know, there isn't, you know, I think that's what needs to happen. And I would just encourage folks, last time at the meeting when this came up, you know, someone asked, why are we here? And the answer was, because no one else will listen to us. And my recommendation is to make sure that you show up and make sure that they hear from you. And while members of Congress aren't mandated to have town halls or public meetings the way that we do, there are ways to show up, at their offices, to call them, you know, the policies that are taking place are not supported by some overwhelming majority that bill barely passed. So I think your federal representatives are aware we need to take the advocacy, but just going to leave it at that. Any other, I have other general closing comments about our meeting, but any other comments?
I would just say on, on this issue as well, that just as a reminder, because I heard a lot of concern around the ICE agents, the ICE agents, you know, are doing a job, but they should be held accountable for doing that job in a, in a way that is professional. And we're seeing a lot of evidence that that is not the case. And so if there are instances where you're seeing local law enforcement cooperating federally in your communities, right, and you have concerns about those behaviors, we don't oversee the local police force. There's 62 municipalities in Montgomery County. So we've got to partner across both federal, county, local, everybody's got to do their part in terms of protecting our community. But just showing up here can't be the only place. So just, I want to reiterate, there's municipal leaders, right, that oversee police forces. If we're seeing things in Norristown, West Norton, East Norton, just talking about my hometown, should raise those concerns. And so I just want to encourage, like, in the spirit of showing up, we're always here to listen and do the best we can within, you know, the confines, confines of our office. But there's people that are elected across Montgomery County that we need to be holding accountable as well.
Yeah. And then. One thing I am curious about, I mean, someone brought up the impersonations. It's very easy to impersonate someone if, you know, you get to wear a mask as well. And I've never seen in my lifetime law enforcement of any sort wearing masks.
That's unprofessional.
And I don't, I don't know if there's a way we can regulate that, but that is something worth looking at at the township level. I don't think the county can do anything like that. And certainly, there's the fact that whatever we do may be disregarded and ignored, but yeah, we have any thoughts on that?
We don't.
Yeah, we certainly don't. Any, any other comments regarding, anything, closing comments?
I don't know where we're at in the agenda.
We're done. You're in closing comments.
Um, yeah, I guess you guys want me to go first.
No, I can go.
Oh, you're done?
Yep, I'm done.
First off, I understand this, this whole thing with immigration, legal immigration, illegal immigration, all this, it's a very complex, very complex situation that's happening in the United States. Just as many people are frustrated with what's going on, as stated earlier, as just as many people are frustrated with what happened with the borders being wide open and the concerns associated to that. But we're seeing to be bringing a lot of politics into these commissioner meetings, and we're talking about a lot of things that are outside of our ability or control.
We're bringing empathy into these commissioner meetings.
I understand that.
Empathy, right?
Empathy is great.
Friends and neighbors that are living here that are being terrorized.
I did not comment.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm sorry, but it's, this is not about politics, it's about people.
Well, but it's politics because.
For me, it's about people.
Everyone has a position on what they feel should or should not be happening. As county commissioners, we have authority, our authority only goes so far. And, and that's where, you know, from my perspective, that's what I'm concerned with, is what authority do we have as county commissioners here in Montgomery County? I do agree with Commissioner McGea, although I'm not sure what two county congresspeople voted yes for the bill, because I don't believe any of the Monco congressman, congresspeople, persons voted yes. But, you know, I agree with the statement that, agree with the laws or don't agree with the laws.
I didn't see.
Oh, agree with the laws or don't agree with the laws. The laws are changed in Congress. Immigration's been, immigration laws have been an issue for years. I agree with Commissioner Reiner as far as that people have been coming into this country illegally for years in different means. And illegally means a lot of different things. They're coming over the border, they overstay visas. Again, it's a very complicated issue. But also, there was a comparison made, I heard earlier, I don't remember who said it, about Ellis Island. The people that came in through Ellis Island, including my ancestors, came into the country legally. There was a process that when you went through Ellis Island, a lot of people came in Ellis Island, they sat on the island, they sat there for months before they were allowed to come into the country. So it's not like they just entered at will.
I said it, Commissioner.
Oh, I remember. I'm sorry.
I misspoke. It was, it was.
Well, I understand.
It was more of an analogy that people have been coming to this country, right?
Well, it has been. I agree with you. Right.
And so all of a sudden.
Well, not all of a sudden, because Obama, who we're all favorite, who tends to be our favorite president by some, was deported between three and five million people, and it's very similar means that are going on today. President Clinton signed Immigration Reform Act back in 96.
Nobody's saying, nobody is saying that there's, there's not immigration reform that needs to happen.
So.
That's not what anybody's saying here. What we're saying here is that people are being terrorized by masked ICE agents in Montgomery County. That's what we're saying.
And I.
And, and if you can't be empathetic to that, right, that's disconcerting, regardless of whether you're a Republican or a Democrat. Like, that's, that, people are scared, and there are people that have been coming to this board meeting for months, all people of all, all, all walks of life. And that's all I'm saying. I'm sorry to interrupt you because I'm, I'm breaking out of trying to, I usually have better decorum, but I mean, we're talking about people. I'm looking at these face, these, these pictures on Facebook, right where I'm raising my son, people with, with, with guns. It's, I mean, we should be concerned about that as a board. So if there's anything that you can do as, as a Republican, right, to like, like have the federal government hold these ICE agents to account in terms of the type of decorum that they need to do, then please, because what's happening in this community is not right. I'm done, sorry.
Sure?
I'm sure, maybe. I don't know. Maybe.
All righty then. So anyway, what I was saying was that there are laws, and if we, if we wanted an expectation of the laws change, the route is, is through Congress. And I know that Congress has been tackling this for years as far as what changes should or shouldn't be made. Deportations and what's been occurring, this isn't new, it's been, it's gone on before. And we're just, have a heightened sense to it. And I'm not going to attest to what may or may not be happening, or what people's feeling, believe is happening or not happening, because I didn't witness it myself. If people, if there's truly, there's legal means that could be taken out, any officer that does anything, even our local police officer, when making arrests, there's policies and procedures that they have to follow. Again, I haven't witnessed anything other than, you know, you see news clips that could be edited down, you don't know what will happen prior. We also see people attacking ICE agents. We see people attacking law enforcement throughout the United States. It's not acceptable. So if we want to talk about empathy, I do have empathy, but I also have empathy for the, for the authorities that are just doing their job and are doing, they're doing the job.
Then show your face. They should show their face.
Well, then, that's an opinion. And again.
No other law enforcement in this country doesn't show their face.
A lot of law enforcements, depending on what they're doing, go into situations.
Okay, so out in the community.
SWAT teams have gone in and have been covered their faces. I mean, again, it's, you know, what, and then, let's talk about the people that dox the ICE agents. I mean, if we want to talk about this stuff, then let's really talk about it. Let's talk about the doxing that goes on in individuals that are just doing their job. You know, how about the rioters that are on public squares that don't show their face? That's acceptable behavior then? I mean, so we can't have it both ways. And I agree that we can't, shouldn't hide behind face mask, whatever. But we should also respect, no matter what, we should be respecting our law enforcement agencies until they break the law. And it's not for us as county commissioners to sit here and make a determination on what laws they may or may not be breaking. We, we heard a lot of public comment, and the feeling that it came across today, as long as we agree with the public comment, we allow people to talk. If we don't agree with the public comment, we shut people down. The one woman that was get up, she was referring to comments that were made at the last board meeting, we shut her down. And then the next person started talking about World War II. And last I checked, as county commissioners, we really don't have much involvement in World War II. So whatever, whatever policies or procedures we're going to put in place, it's the same for everyone. If we, it's, we can't, shouldn't edit it or shut people down just because we may not agree or like what they're saying. And that's, that's the impression that we gave today. Because one person was talking about comments that were made at the last public meeting, and we shut that person down, and we, and the response we gave.
That's not what happened.
It's exactly what happened. The response that we gave was that it wasn't.
I'll let you finish your closing comments.
It wasn't germane to county business. That's what was said, and I agree with that. But if we're going to state that, which I totally agree, that the comments that are made here should be made of what pertains to county business. And if that's the case, when people get up and start talking about World War II.
You, so you can always make a point of order, and that would be the way to handle that. Go ahead.
I'm not, that's, I don't want to get into an adversarial comment back and forth with you. I'm just saying that, all I'm saying is that part of this, I'm sitting here agreeing with you, and you're, and that was far as it pertains to county business. All I'm saying is that if we're going to apply that, we apply it to everyone. That's all I'm saying.
Let me just clarify, the first commenter, the whole first minute had nothing to do with county business. And commenting on some other comment in the past is not commenting on county business. And I interjected to ask her if she had a comment on county business, she had no answer. So that was the end of the comment. The next. The next commenter actually did start by speaking about-
And then went off on a tangent.
And I maybe lost them, so next time, law enforcement better.
Well, that's all I'm saying, is that if we're going to, if we're going to have a policy, that we apply it to everyone.
So, you can declare a point of order if you have an issue, and I will consider what you raised, and-
Okay.
And if you disagree, you can make a motion and overrule me, but that's the way-
Well, that would be, the meetings will go on forever if I did that.
Point of order, very easy. Go ahead.
So, so, yeah, you guys, with all, with these interruptions, I, you know, I'm, I'm just gonna end it at this point. And I look forward to commenting on your comments in the future.
All right. All right. Look, I, I just will reiterate, you know, what we said on the, on the front in terms of immigration issues, it's, you know, it's very heartbreaking for me to hear that the valedictorian of Norristown did not have their parents see them walk across and receive their diploma. That's just, you know, really a sad thing, and a commentary on where we are. And it is a new moment, this is not what's been happening all the time. It's, we've never seen this level of vilification of immigrants, and the people that are-
Illegals.
Living in fear are-
Illegals.
Are, not, not really. I actually talked to a woman who is an immigrant, who is a Holocaust survivor, and she carries her passport now, because anyone who is not a born citizen, and by the way, there's an attempt to take away citizenship for people who are even born here, is under concerns that they need their paperwork, because there's essentially a military force that has now been funded in the country that's gonna ask people for their papers door to door. That's something that has never happened before. And I want to thank Commissioner Weiner for reminding us this is about people, and we're here to represent all of our constituents, and there are many people who are legal citizens or law abiding who've never broken any law and are in fact essential members of our community who make Montgomery County what it is. We're here to represent them, and we'll do what we can in every way, including advocating at the federal level to make sure that they are respected, that their rights are respected and treated, they're treated with dignity. So, with that, our next meeting is Thursday, August 14th, 2025, at 10:00 AM in this boardroom. We do have many evening meetings, we'll have some of those in September coming up, and you can always hear from folks outside of the comment, and look forward to the, to the ride this weekend. Thanks to everyone in the DA's office and really across the county that are going to participate in that, and see you soon. I'll make a motion to adjourn the July 16th, 2025 meeting for the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
A second, bud.
Seconded by Commissioner Weiner. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, the meeting is adjourned. We'll bring up the controller and have a brief salary board meeting. Thank you. Okay. Any public comment for salary board? No public comments. Okay. Tony Brew will present our salary board list.
Good morning, members of the salary board, oh, I'm sorry, good afternoon, members of the salary board. You should have in front of you final copy of the salary board list, it's an eight-page document dated July 15th, 2025, with a timestamp of 2:50 PM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for, for your consideration.
Separate, I would make a motion separating Director of Internal Affairs.
All right. Is there a second? Okay, the motion fails. Is there a motion to approve the July 16th, 2025 salary board presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew, Chief Human Resources Officer?
Send it.
Moved by Commissioner Weiner. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Controller Hart. Any board comment?
Just a quick comment, I asked to separate a position. This position is paying an individual, which I'm sure the person we hired is an amazing person, it has nothing to do with, with that person directly, but I do not feel that paying someone $160,000 a year is warranted for that position. And it's frustrating, because when I ask to separate something, and it doesn't get separated, because then it forces me into voting no on the entire slate of, in this instance, positions. And for instance, we're making a bunch of salary adjustments for individuals, employees that work here extremely hard in the county, which I have, like I said earlier, I'm, I don't have an issue with paying competitive salaries for our staff. And I, so not allowing a separation of this, you know, puts me in a position where if I vote no, then it looks like I'm not supporting all of these employees, because I'm not willing to pay $160,000 for this position. And especially when we sit here and we talked earlier about, you know, salaries that we're trying to bring up, and, you know, and I also talked about the deficit, I talked about all this stuff earlier, and this is just one of several positions over this year that we've hired that were exorbitant salaries that I voted no in the whole lot before, but I just don't feel that $160,000 is warranted for this position.
Do you have a comment?
I have a comment, yeah.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask Commissioner DiBello if in the future you have a concern with something, this is my personal request, if you have a concern with a, a job, that you reach out to me and discuss it beforehand, I could listen to your point of view, and if I would agree with it, or I have some questions, maybe we could talk about that, but this is the first I've heard of any issue with anybody on the board, right, as we're about the-
Yeah. Thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, look, if, well, yes, salary board, you can, you can have those discussions, we can have HR discussions as a whole in executive session, or separately as individuals, you know, rather than, you know, dealing with that. In general, I've never dealt with the salary issue in a, in a public meeting, but, yeah, I would suggest the same, and, you know, if there's support, then someone will second the motion.
Well, I just want to be clear that the process that we have at the county is we individually meet with staff prior to this meeting to review the agenda, and I expressed my concerns about that salary number. And it's my understanding that staff, when I, when I, I was told that if I have concerns, to make sure I tell, and I did that, so I'm not sure what is communicated beyond those meetings or not, but I will most certainly reach out to you, especially when we have exorbitant salaries on this agenda.
I, I mean, we're trying to, we are trying to pay competitive salaries, and I think we've done a, a lot of good work to try and right-size the compensation of county employees, but, you know, we're trying to get good people in, in the right chairs, and-
I don't think this, sorry.
Yeah, it's just, the fact that we're even talking about this with like people, like an individual employee even listening to this is just, it's, it's absurd.
I don't think there's a single person who makes-
For $160,000, they could deal with it.
That's, that's obnoxious. That's obnoxious.
A lot of this is being obnoxious today. So, let's go on.
There's a reason no one seconded your motion.
Whatever.
So-
You might agree with it, that's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve or to adjourn the July 16th meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
Send it.
Is there a second? Moved by Commissioner Weiner, seconded by Controller Hart. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting is adjourned.